I'm following the order of the, uh, scheduled session of the Kaiser Planning Commission meeting for December 6th, 6 o'clock. Like everybody is in here, I'd like to make note that at the very beginning before the session started, Matt Allmeyer was sworn in as our new, uh, planning commissioner.
My mic's not on, okay. Moving right along, transportation growth management impact analysis. You're on.
All right, um, my microphone's on. Hey there, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, thanks for having us. My name is Glenn Boland, I'm a planner with OTAC headquartered in Portland, here with my colleague Kate Rogers. We are working for your, your staff, uh, under a grant from the State Transportation Growth Management, uh, Division Agency, whatever they're gonna be called, hence the name. Our activities, we've been spending, well, since about noon today, meeting every four or five minutes with a different group, gathering input from stakeholders on issues related to growth, population growth, and, um, concerns, challenges, opportunities. Uh, therefore, we are also doing research on costs of growth that will be, and looking at some peer cities like, uh, such as, uh, McMinnville, um, maybe Redmond, uh, other places that are, have, made, done growth management planning, done urban growth boundary expansion, similar kind of things, looking at, um, also costs of development for the current stuff that's happening within the state, looking at permit fees, other jurisdictions, to help inform, uh, and inform ultimately, um, city leadership, uh, to help with policy direction for, um, how much energy to put in a different kind of, uh, growth endeavors. One of the big issues, of course, is looking at, uh, the question of should the city be looking at urban growth boundary expansion to the north? So this is, a lot of this is getting towards some of that. Um, so I think, as much as it is, is, feels strange with a microphone and everything like that and the structure we're in, the intent of these sessions has been a dialogue, just a discussion. Um, and we're taking notes, and we're gonna be putting together, you know, a report on this for staff, and then ultimately, um, we've been, like I said, we've been meeting with select stakeholder groups all day. We'll have, um, a couple of workshops, uh, here come later this winter, that'll be just open to the general public, and then ultimately, a report that we'll deliver to the City Council. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna start, we sent, I, I think you all received this as well, but we sent a discussion guide out ahead of time to folks, I think just yesterday afternoon. Um, no homework was needed, so it, just now fill in the blanks. Um, and just, you know, quickly, some of this, you know, some of these questions were, um, more directed towards certain people we had, uh, with us, people kind of focused in on their expertises or what they knew. We've heard a lot about why people like Kaiser, we can, I think, you know, you hear that every day, probably, so we don't need to get into this, what makes our place, uh, unique and special, but, um, what we'd like to go on and, and focus to start this conversation is to get your feelings, thoughts, and this is just sharing all of us on what are, what you might see as both opportunities and what you see as concerns as they relates to population growth, um, within the city. So, I don't know how you want, if you wanna use your buttons to, to change speaking order, but from that, Nate, you have?
Um, I'm looking at the Chair, but with the Chair's indulgence, uh, all of our discussions have been pretty free-flowing.
Okay.
And so, rather than having to go through the protocol of being recognized by the Chair, I, I would think that we could just have a discussion, raise your hand or whatever, for the, for the benefit of the cameraman, but, um, so, I, the intent is if, if-
That, that's, that would make it a nice easy night.
Okay, good. We want it to be as easy and as open of a discussion as possible.
As long as the other commissioners feel that that's inappropriate, and, and as long as you, um, don't feel intimidated and can say your piece on the subject.
Yeah, so with, with that, I'll throw it out to, to the group, I mean, I think one of the most common things we heard today was concerns over traffic. And, um, you know, we've heard some folks talk about some of the positive sides of, of growing, and in this case, I don't mean where we're growing, which is growth in general is, um, you know, the ability to get more shops and restaurants. Um, are there, are there question of, are there ways to get more jobs in town? But then at the same time, concerns about crowding, parking, traffic, all the things you probably can, can imagine. Um, so, I think the, the, um, to, to preface this, you know, the, the city of, of, of Kaiser is different to a lot of cities in the state in that, because you got a shared urban growth boundary, um, you have some flexibility on how much growth the city chooses to pursue, whereas a standalone city might run out of land supply and, and, and be challenged on that, have nowhere else to go. But so, as I said, just a free forum, a little bit of discussion, if, if you have, thinking about your constituents, thinking about opportunity, that, what you come across on daily basis, if any, any concerns or opportunities stand out to you, um, obviously, I mentioned traffic was a big one that came up today, but, you know.
Go ahead, Michael, just go ahead.
My name's Mike DeBlasi, um, so you're talking about, you know, population growth and, and the, the effects, and people are concerned about traffic and parking. Which, I think that leads to the question of what kind of development are we gonna have, are we gonna have development that requires people to get in cars and drive everywhere, and requires that they have free, easy access to parking, or we, do we want development that encourages people to, to get out of their car, to walk from business to business, to their store, whatever, and also, uh, that allows, you know, the compact urban development? So, you know, I, I, you know, in another issue we had, uh, a couple of months ago, there was always a concern about traffic. I think people have this myopic view of any development's gonna lead to more traffic, well, it all depends on the choices you make of how you develop, so, population growth and economic growth and, and infrastructure growth, all that doesn't have to be a bad thing, it's just how you set it up to, to grow. So, that, that's something I really wanna see as, as a, a robust discussion on that.
On, on the traffic, I'm also Chair of Traffic Safety, so, uh, we've worked with the, the police on a few, several issues, and statistically, our injury accidents are all on River Road. River Road was, is designed in the past, before the city became a city, it was a county road, basically. And it's too narrow in some spots, especially on the north end. The, I mean, on the south end, the north end came more after the city, and there, there's better improvement. But what I, we've heard on, on the, um, committee was that, uh, it's River Road, and the junctions to River Road, that when people talk traffic, that's the examples they give. And as Michael said, no matter what kind of development, some may enhance the traffic flow, others may not. And, uh, as far as the urban growth boundary, Kaiser can only go one way, and that's north. And, you know, there's a lot of arguments, uh, about, that one could make about that, because it is agricultural. But the other thing that would bothers me a little bit is the area that I think personally, that if you, if we got all the compromises that we needed, that area would be the, I'm gonna be specific, the Perkins Road area. And that's in another school district. So, there would have to be some, um, working with the Jervis School District, because a lot of people that moved to Kaiser expect to be in the Salem Kaiser School District. And, um, you know, if I'm gonna, if we're building homes, or duplexes, or beautiful townhouses with, you know, nice cul-de-sacs that people can play in and stuff, it's gonna be in a different school district.
Yeah, it's one of the, uh, that's one of the, um, one of the concerns, one, we're looking through the, the Kaiser Compass Division, you know, this, and it came across many times today, but this identity with McNary, with having a one high school town. And, uh, and the current, the proposed bond measures for upgrades will, you know, keep it sized appropriately to handle the growth that's projected for now. But doesn't, uh, assume, you know, urban growth boundary expansion, anything of the nature. That is one of the concerns, I think, the question, you know, for the, the group is, does, you know, if, if we expanded the UGB, changed the shape of the city, that is a high likelihood that some kids would end up going to a different high school. And not all the kids within Kaiser would be in one school.
And also, different fire district.
So how important is the one school town?
Well, that's, that's a community discussion.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, I moved here 25 years ago, I know most of these people have been here probably for life, but when I moved here 25 years ago from Portland, it was because it was a small city next to agriculture where there were horses, I mean, you could be right out in the country, just going one mile, or you were right by the river, you were right by, and so that's really what drew us to Kaiser, not to Salem, but to Kaiser, was that particular reason. However, as you know, I mean, living here 25 years, I've seen we've grown, and we've grown, and we've been able to, within the city, handle that growth, and of course, then, because of the growth comes other things, like you said, Kaiser Station, businesses get attracted to towns that have a larger population, uh, because they can sustain their business in that town, and then that would bring more jobs to the area. So, there's so many pros and cons to this whole thing, we all have our opinions, and, but, uh, still, the pros and cons are gonna be there, no matter what our opinion is, I think.
Yeah. As, uh, as Planning Commissioner, then, since you're, you know, meeting a lot of the developers that come in, the newcomers, some of the things we heard today, um, was that there's a lot of folks moving from Portland as commuters, out commuters up to Portland, which is kind of a, a new one to me, I knew about southbound commuting, and, and, and that's one of the ones that has a big impact, is River Road, is that, uh, that morning and evening commute. Do, is there, do, does the Commission have an impression on the folks coming in, are they finding home in Kaiser and community in Kaiser the way the existing residents have been? Or are they, is it, um, yeah, more?
I guess you and I could probably talk, since we've moved-
Could.
We've moved both, uh, council, new subdivisions in, uh, um, north west Kaiser area. And all our, well, a good portion of my neighbors are younger, and all work in the Wilsonville, Portland, Tigard area. Um, we just sold our old house, uh, to move into this new one, and a, a couple from Portland bought it, at our asking price in three days, uh, because it was so much cheaper. The Transit Center was one of the, one of the selling factors, because they could go to the Kaiser Transit Center, take the 1X to Portland, get on MAX, go right to the med school where they worked. And it was costing a hundred and sixty dollars. Now, I haven't been there a whole, whole year in this, in this new, new division, so I, I don't know how they interact with the community per se, yet, because they're in Portland back and forth, they've been really nice neighbors, but I, I don't know if they're connected like-
Well, we've had a couple of neighborhood parties, obviously, but we have people from Chicago, and from California, and from Portland, we have them from all over the place that moved, Bend, that they all moved to Kaiser, 'cause I would ask them, why Kaiser, I mean, why did you pick Kaiser over Salem per se, right, a bigger town? And they said, because of the small town feel, and because it was a community, they wanted to be where there was a community. So that's always a big selling point, too, but a lot of them are commuters, I don't think, I don't think not one person on that, oh, two people on that street used to work for the city of Kaiser, but they, they're retired now, other than that, there's-
Yeah, that's why mine-
There's, uh, no one else works in Kaiser, they all work elsewhere.
My sub, sub, uh, new subdivision is a small one, and it was just finished this year, and it's much cheaper down here, um, the connection to I-5.
Is the, is the, is it pricing people out that might otherwise be living here, staying here?
Well, specifically, we, we moved, we bought our house in 2014, before the market really took off, and in three years, we've had almost a hundred thousand dollar appreciation on our house, and we've done nothing, right? It's just the people coming in, um, we had a cash offer, a guy literally knocked on our door and says, we wanted to buy this house, it's sold, we'll give you this amount of money right now. And I'm like, I would've taken it in a heartbeat if I would've known that I wouldn't be sleeping in a cardboard, it'd be a nice cardboard box, but I'd be sleeping in a cardboard box. And it would've priced me out of my own neighborhood, and then you're looking at, you know, moving out of Kaiser, which I don't wanna do personally. Um, and it would, you know, so it, it's been really interesting from a, from a young buyer's perspective myself, um, and seeing that market change, I mean, houses in my neighborhood, 24 hours, at, at most, before they're sold. Um, I mean, in some cases, the signs never even hit the yards. So, we've had, we've had one house that's five houses away from me, it's sold twice in the last year, um, because people are coming in, they're making 50 grand on it, selling it, moving on, so.
Do you see a greater need to accommodate new growth in terms of housing within existing boundaries by maybe infill development, which may be a little bit different housing style? Um, or expanding outward and allowing more single-family, you know, subdivision type development?
Well, as, you, as somebody that sold a piece of property this year, an empty lot for infill, uh, the city of Kaiser, uh, and they built, uh, put a modular worth with, went through the city of Kaiser, and was able to put a modular unit in there, uh, on, on the lot. So, I think, you know, infill as the market will bear, I just know that north of us, the land is agricultural. You know, it's a lot of old Lake LeBiche area, and Lake LeBiche loam, as it's called, the dirt, and-
Um, I, I think the, if we focus only on single-family housing, we are gonna be pricing out people, and pricing out demographics, too, you know, uh, a retired couple may not want a full, big house, they might want an apartment. Um, so, I think we need to keep encouraging alternative housing, and I don't even call it alternative, I wanna call it the diverse array of housing options, um, which could include some alternative housing options, like granny flats. But, I, I think, um, we have to set a, a bar, though, for the type of development we're gonna allow. If you just slap up something, you'll get something that's not gonna add value to the city in the long term. So we want something that's going to have long-term value, and something that people will want to keep, you know, 50 years from now, not a single family, but you know what I mean? I also think that if we focus only on single-family housing, even a denser, uh, development, I don't know, I don't think that really, uh, the tax base off of that doesn't pay for all the infrastructure, especially if we do choose to expand the urban growth boundary.
We're talking about the urban growth boundary, and that's, and growth, but I don't think we're just talking about population, I think we need to look also at jobs and opportunities, so that A, people may not have to commute as far, and I think all of us will attest, wherever we live, probably at least 60, if not 70 or 75% of our neighbors don't commute, whether it be to any of the large, you know, the state employees, Salem Hospital, the school district, or they're going up to Wilsonville and Tigard, because they can commute here easier than they can from, say, the west side into Wilsonville or whatever. So I think we need to look at a way that, if we're talking about urban growth boundary and growth, a way to develop some jobs, family wage jobs, and opportunities to support the growth independent, as much, it's never gonna be totally independent, but, you know, they're, they talk about, a lot about all the new jobs at Kaiser Station. Well, a lot of those jobs at Kaiser Station are people that got transferred from other businesses that closed on Lancaster to come over here, and a lot of them are part-time, low-wage, usually non-benefit positions. So I think we need to, when we're, just, when we're talking about this, we need to look at a bigger picture than just number of bodies inside the city limit sign, but how, how do we, as a city, become more self-sustaining?
Good, Mike, Matt?
So, and, and Gary, I, I really honestly couldn't agree with you more, um, and I, and I think this year specifically has told that tilted or larger, um, scale in terms of Kaiser really having to do the hard work of, of tasking ourselves to look at our resources and how far our resources are stretched, and asking ourselves what we're willing to do to support those, and I think if, um, I, I think to support what you're saying in some degree, uh, with, with, uh, Mike's saying is that, you know, the more people, it's not paying for it, but if we encourage industry and/or commercial development, um, that has those family wage jobs and those high-skill things, then it's gonna encourage folks that are making the commute to Portland from Kaiser, uh, want to just stay home, right? Because Kaiser's a great place to live, but it's a hard place to work. Um, we do a very good job of supporting, supporting small business. Um, we've seen small businesses over the last couple of years be able to come out of their homes, get places on River Road, and become more sustainable in the community, um, you know, folks that have had, um, you know, that have had a business here, and they've been able to move across the street and double their employees, and those are all encouraging things, uh, but, you know, I look at the expansion, not so much as a population, uh, because agreeing to some degree of what Mike's saying, if we start bringing another 5, 10,000 people, I mean, right now, depending on what 15:00 in the morning you leave to go into Salem, it changes your, your, your time and your distance and, and your route significantly. I mean, there's oftentimes, I'll add six or seven miles to my commute, just to save 25 minutes, because I know the streets, I mean, it's, it's, it can be that bad sometimes. Um, so, yeah, I, I, I agree with what, what, uh, what Gary said.
Speaking, and I agree with you, Gary, uh, industry, but what industry? Um, and I'm just talking for Hersh. Right now, there's one industry that's being developed in Kaiser that's very subtle, but it's getting bigger and does have wages, family wages, it's the medical industry. Um, not only do we have, uh, nursing homes and extended care homes, we have Kaiser Permanente, we have do, uh, several major doctors' offices, and that is one that has the least land impact as compared to a heavy industry, um, has the decent wages on the whole. So, uh, to me, that's one area that we wanna keep focused on, doesn't mean that the other industries are a no-no, we're all for that. But here's one that the doctors are moving here, you know, um, the health insurance companies are moving here, um, the senior centers are moving here, uh, the chiropractors and the massage therapists have offices. That's one industry that, um, we should say, well, we got this one, let's keep this one going and look for others, too.
Well, well, and I agree with that, but one of the issues, too, is when you run out of place to build these places, right? Then that's, that's the issue, too, is Kaiser, we don't have a lot of room left now to build the opportunity for this. I mean, I'm glad that we had the space for Kaiser Permanente to come in, and also for their dental office, but this is a prime location for a lot of those medical places, but we're running out of that space for them to build, so.
But if, if we go the urban growth boundary north, no matter whether it's an acre or whatever, we should think about industry, too.
So, Hersh, just jumping in here, a lot of that work has been done through that visioning document that, that he is referring to, the compass. We've targeted those five industries, specifically medical, um, and there are five different categories of that, so we've already laid that groundwork. The question that we're trying to get to is whether or not we look to expand an urban growth boundary, and all of the impacts that that would bring, and how would we fold that in? Mike, your, your point of smart growth, all of those things, absolutely, those are, those are the things that, that we've already laid groundwork for. What we're trying to get to with this study is specifically the question of the growth. Assuming we will do it right, and assuming that we have already laid the groundwork and will follow that groundwork, it's, that growth will bring impacts, and it will be, bring impacts to transportation, it'll be, bring impacts to the school, assuming that there's a residential component to that growth. Uh, those are the things which I think our consultants are trying to get down to. What is, what is the temperament of this community about that kind of change? And that kind of, of shift in the identity of our community? And because we have been careful all along, we have preserved options for this community. And that's what they are trying to, to get a handle on, is specifically, where is our temperament? And are we comfortable with change? Are we comfortable with, uh, more transportation? Some of the things regarding transportation, we don't have control over the transit district. We don't have control over the voters that consistently turn down bond measures to expand transit facilities. Those are things outside of our control, but the question that we are faced with is, do we utilize the options to, um, have little to no expansion of the urban growth boundary, and send it within, to other places within our growth boundary? Or do we want to try to carve out our own path and have a moderate or an aggressive amount of growth within what would then become our new city of Kaiser? So, that's, I'm, that's what these questions are trying to get to, as to not so much, should we grow intelligently? Or should we grow and, and make, um, you know, our world a better place, generally? It's, it's trying to get down to specific impacts to expanding an urban growth boundary.
Well, so, based on that, then, what I would like to see out of this is a true cost-benefit analysis that shows, you know, if we do, you know, continue on a path or expand the, your urban growth boundary, there's going to be X more miles of water sewer pipe, there's gonna be X more uh, miles of road, X more, uh, traffic lights and safety lights, uh, nightlights, you know, streetlights. Then, if we choose to, say, double the density of the existing city of Kaiser, what would be the cost of that, and conversely, what would be the savings, you know, would we get, what would be the tax revenue increase per acre? Um, what would be, you know, the, the cost, would there be a cost of having to upgrade the existing infrastructure even without expanding the UGB? So, and I'd like to see those numbers.
Yeah, you're getting, yeah, you're getting a little bit, uh, ahead, that's exactly where we wanna go, um, and, and this, this initial project is, is a little bit more about packaging up, here are the things you should be aware of, and here's the temperature we've taken from people. Here are what some other folks experienced, um, so we'll profile some other cities, and, and how they've done things, the next logical step, and like, from that, then you make the decision, okay, do we commit these staff resources to doing that kind of work? Doing the scenario analysis, doing that testing, developing those indicators that go back to your vision and measure what is important about Kaiser, how would it be affected in this new future if we do A, if we do B, if we do C, et cetera? So you're, I mean, you're speaking my language, that's exactly where you wanna go with this, this is just kind of a first step for that, but we'll, we'll think about that as we write up this report, 'cause absolutely in the right place.
I think the biggest issue that plagues a lot of the citizens in Kaiser is if we decide to build out, um, the traffic, the schools, you will have a split of the schools. The traffic will be, unless we do something with River Road, which there's no way to do, but find maybe another northbound avenue through Kaiser, I think even infilling what we have now, without even growing, is a big, big issue, okay? Because we get bigger and bigger, our homes are getting small, our land, where the homes sit on is getting smaller and smaller- sit on is getting smaller and smaller and pushing as many people as we can. Even if we did all the infill, there's, the schools couldn't have, I mean, you're going to have a redistricting of the school district. And this is the issue, I think, that's going to plague a lot of the citizens in Kaiser because they're going to think, what happened? You know, why am I living here and my kid has to go here? And then, or the traffic, it takes me 15 minutes to get downtown when it should take me five, you know, those kinds of issues. And I know that's what we're trying to reach and trying to figure out, but this is, to me, all those other things have to be figured out at the same time.
Right.
Because I think that's your biggest, biggest con, I think, with this whole thing. And that's my opinion, anyway.
When, yeah, when, when you have folks coming to comment on development applications, for example, what are the hot button issues that they bring up? Is it character? Is it parking? Is it traffic? Is it all the above?
Traffic for one, and characters another. One of the things this last year on the Verta Lane property, we heard a lot about the character. My grandfather came to Kaiser in 1926, so our family has long history. And this, this community has a sense of agricultural sense, even if we're not ranchers or farmers or anything. Seeing the cattle, seeing the horses has, when that seemed to be going away, people, my goodness, people that I didn't even know noticed that, were saying, we're losing part of Kaiser. Isn't that what you heard at City Council? And growth might change that sense if it's not done. Matt, you have your fingers up.
Well, I guess my, my question is, is Nate, you brought up the, you know, do we do no growth, a little bit of growth, or do we go aggressive? I mean, what does that look like? What is, I mean, no growth, obviously is no growth, right? But is, very little, yeah?
Well, when I say no growth, that, it's no expansion. When we talk about growth, there will be infill growth. We have already identified, our housing needs analysis has identified that there is capacity within the city. And so it, I'd, I'd be cautious to characterize it in terms of growth, no growth. It's expansion or, or how much or that kind of thing. And, and what level of densification? Well, no, it's not really a correction, it's just make sure that we understand the, the question that we are trying to frame here is there will continue to be infill. There are large chunks of ground. There's the St. Edward's property, completely greenfield, open land. There's, we've already referred to the Herbert property, though it went through a rezone, comp plan change. You know, 12 acres of, of greenfield development. There's the Earl property along Lockhaven. There's, so the list goes on. And there is additional growth that will happen in city of Kaiser. Our plans, our transportation system plan identifies just how much growth capacity we have and is intended to create those improvements that will address that kind of growth. What we're trying to frame here tonight is, do we want to change that picture? Do we want to change the boundary of the city and, and create a place for additional growth within the regional UGB that we have? And do we want some of that to come to Kaiser? Knowing that there are all kinds of questions and legal challenges and stuff available. Salem has gone through their process and they've identified that the urban growth boundary does have enough capacity to meet our 20-year, our, theirs and ours, 20-year land supply. Is that something that we want to change? That's the question that we're wrestling with.
I, I brought this up to you and Sam a long time ago, and you probably thought I was crazy when I brought it up, but I'll, I'll bring it up here since, let everyone think I'm crazy. So what, one thing, if we could look at it as an option, is within boundary, reboundering it, so basically a city limit boundary. You know, I know it wasn't ever, well, maybe it was, I don't know, but I doubt it was ever thought to be a break between the cities, but the Parkway is, is a, seems like a logical break between Kaiser and Salem. So to me, that seems like a good reboundering as, and, and, you know, that might be a bargaining chip with Salem or some other chip we have, which would increase our land base and possibly, you know, there's businesses there that we could bring into our tax base. I don't know, the legality or the, the legal routes there are to that.
Well, I think that's a little bit different kind of discussion because that really doesn't change, because those are all developed grounds. And so that's a matter of, some of that jog of boundary that you would think we would bring into, one of those big buildings is a state building. And I don't know about you, but we get no revenue from that. And there's, that, that's a service requirement. And so, I didn't call you crazy.
No, you never did. It was more the look on the face. Until now, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are those kinds of things that we can look at, but those are really kind of peripheral, kind of, that, that may kind of change a little bit of the character of those kinds of adjustments. But this is the big picture that these guys are trying to, to get down to the bottom of. So, and, yeah, we can talk more about that, I think.
Yeah, we're trying to, to be able to put together a report for council with some, I wouldn't even say advice, more, some fact finding. Here's, here, you know, from the range of desires, concerns among stakeholders and the public to some lessons learned from other places so that the council's in a better position to say, all right, you know, we've got people telling us, if only the urban growth boundary wasn't here, the world would be so much cheaper, you know? Is that true? What, what does it take for the city to investigate that? How much, you know, kind of, what should be looking at before you, you open the door so you, you know, know it might, might be back there? And one of the things that, you know, we've talked to people about is, you see, we're trying to take the temperature of folks a little bit, like what's the, what's the, not the comfort level, but how much risk are you willing to take? You know, the, I've been involved in several urban growth boundary amendment cases, either as a spectator or, or as staff, and a few of them have, you know, where cities tried to bring in farmland, they've gone 10 years into legal process. You know, Bend is a most recent example, and they're now doing some really good work as a result of getting denied by the, the state. They had, and luckily the state funded part of it, but it's, you know, taken two staff people almost full-time and consultants to go and then, and really, you know, they're going to end up with a smaller boundary adjustment, but they are adjusting some and some rezonings inside, inside the boundary, allowing some more uses. Some of the things you already do, like accessory units, but some other things, more mixed use and some of the stuff that Mike's been bringing up that they wouldn't have, have done before because some of the folks felt, that's not Bend, that's not our character, we don't go above two stories, you know? So some of those things that have, have changed. Because again, they too have, you know, that historical, they were a cow town. I mean, they were, they were, there was the military base to the south and there was cattle ranchers and they were the logging mill in the middle, you know? So they've had that, you know, influx of people from all over and the same kind of change. So that's the kind of thing that we want to, you know, want, make sure the city is going in, in eyes open, that there are some approaches that are easier than others. You know, we, the state law, it makes it really difficult to bring in farm zone land. I mean, I don't know if you realize this, but the, the state legislature is the planning commission for the rural lands, pretty much. They're all, they're the only ones that can really allow you to change EFU land. And so when cities have gone after that to try to expand their cities, they've had some success, but it hasn't been easy. And so we want, that's the thing that we're going to document is what that takes so that the council can be, be aware of what, if your direction staff, you know, know what your, what your directing resources toward. So I think if that's kind of, you know, that's kind of open discussion here is, you know, just kind of learning from people what, what their comfort level is, how aggressive they think the city should be on different avenues, that sort of thing.
Well, like I mentioned very big, as far as what I personally have heard, people like that sense is, it was a small town, they like the sense of the agricultural. And I think historically, when we've done any changes or the Verta Lane property, first thing comes out, we're, well, what are you going to do with the cows?
Eat them.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I, I mean, when they were butchering up there early last year, you know, you don't get that too often in a, in a city of butchering the cattle out in the field. So that, you know, that may be something that goes away, but there's still that sense of, it's nice.
And, and that's one of the...
Unlike Bend, which has other recreational activities that are part of the city, Kaiser really doesn't, per se. We try to do a lot of things and, you know, our high school and its activities are very important and some other activities, but it's not like Bend.
I think it's really important that before we expand or increase the urban growth boundary, that we make a very conscientious effort to redevelop some parts of the community where the housing stock is significantly older and maybe a lot of the improvements to the streets, sidewalks, curbs, drainage, all those things have not happened yet. And it's going to be hard probably for a developer to put that together, to buy enough, to make it cost effective for them because they aren't, and they're entitled to a profit. But most of us, a lot of the Kaiser growth since mid eighties has really been north of Lockhaven and out River Road, Wheatland area. And all those people, including now where Marlene is and where Hersh is and where I am, we're all living on somebody's farm. And our farmland, once you change it, is not reclaimable. So I would really like to maintain as much of that open space. And it might be, in a way, causing housing prices to go higher because if you value the land for housing, but you have a smaller piece of it, I'm sure the price is going to go up, supply and demand. But the benefit is, you still have the open space and the traffic is an issue no matter which way we go. Because right now, we have essentially River Road and we have Lockhaven. The people that live up north, a lot of them will go out to Brook Lake and get on the freeway there. But from Lockhaven south, most everybody's going out Lockhaven or the Parkway. And River Road, you know, Cherry Avenue can't be, we're not going to see two more lanes each way on Cherry Avenue. Verta Lane is limited by probably the cost of acquiring property and redeveloping that. But I think we need to, before we seriously look at expanding urban growth boundary, I think we need to figure out a way as a community to take the assets we have now and make them as efficiently used as possible.
Hi, I have a thought. I'm the newest person to Kaiser, I think. I've been here a year. And I'm, I started working in Kaiser three years ago and pursued getting a rental here twice. And it was so difficult that I actually moved to Salem for a year before I saved up to buy a house here. Literally, they'd have two or three families at the rental at the same time. You'd have to have your application in, you'd have to pursue the rental company, pay upfront. It was a lot of work to get into Kaiser. I will say once, now that I'm here, I found the house that we, that we bought, but I was there the day of it and there was already seven people that viewed that house. It's gone up 100 grand in a year. I do love Kaiser, but it is hard to get here. So if you are looking, and, you know, I, I work in Kaiser, I lived in Salem, I'm from the area. So if you are looking to expand, it is something to pursue more housing, more accessible housing for younger people.
The, the city is one of, for a city this size, there are very few multifamily units. I think we said 70, 30, 30% multifamily, something like that, which, you know, I, I think statewide average is closer to 50/50. With bigger cities being the other, flipped the other way. What do you, how, what would you think as, you know, hearing people come in here and make comments and stuff, you know, there are a fair number of infill opportunities that include redevelopment going up, going more intense. What do you think the appetite is for more multifamily housing and/or mixed use projects in the city?
Well, you know, from my point of view, I'm in my 30s, I have a stepson, he's a teenager, and most of my friends are about my age. They do say that they would move here if they had the opportunity, but there's, it's hard to get here and it's so competitive. They love the school system. I hear that a lot, that they wish they could get to the school system, but they don't want to take the risk or they want to stay in their area. I also have heard and feel that there's not a lot to do here. So I do live north Kaiser and there, like my stepson, there's not a way for him to go anywhere without a vehicle. You know, it, he's walking on River Road. We got a membership for him at the, just the gym down the road and we don't feel comfortable with him walking down that big road right there or being on his bike. We have to drive him, which is a, a barrier to accessing services. You know, there isn't like a downtown. My first committee was about the theater and that was super exciting for me. And I think that is something else to also consider is when you want to bring newer, younger families in, to also give an opportunity for entertainment that's not just shopping or food.
One more. So I, this is a bigger question than you probably prepared to answer, but when it comes to these workshops that we'll be having in the future, what, and how, how do you plan on phrasing these issues? Are you planning on thinking, is it going to be open-ended or are you going to, have you been thinking about the words you'll be presenting? Because you asked a question, how do people think about this? You know, obviously if you ask one question, the same question in two different ways, you're going to get drastically different responses.
Yeah, you know, I haven't put together the program. This is our first major activity, so I'm not there yet to say, here's what we do. I think we've been talking that, I think the first one will be more interactive, whether the second one a little more open house style. So the first one, a little chance to, a little bit, probably more opportunity to get data in terms of people, decision-making, looking at some trade-offs and weighing in when they can see a couple of sides of things. But we haven't gotten there to, to what the methods might be yet. I know when you get down the road where you're going with indicators and, you know, at that level, you know, you, you like a lot of graphics and maps and vignettes to explain how different futures affect people in their daily lives so they can kind of weigh and say, where, where am I on this spectrum here? I like more activity, but I don't like, you know, that kind of thing. So that, that, that level would kind of, I think you'd probably look at something like that down the road. I think at this level, we'll try to frame some trade-offs, you know? Some say, others say, you know, where do you come in the middle and, you know, and the format, I haven't figured out yet. We're going to be working on that after, after this.
I would say that we don't think it's our role to lead people in one way or the other, you know, we want to get, we want to get people's honest takes, given all of the information. So that's, that's the piece that I think we can add is that people might not have all the information about what the potential trade-offs are, particularly for urban growth boundary expansion. So I think, yeah, so we want to ask the question in a neutral way with providing all the information that would be relevant.
Nate, I see the next group's here, so Josh, anybody, Kyle? One, one final?
One final thought.
Okay.
So I, again, I'm tending to find myself agreeing with Gary. I think that the, the one resounding response I got from, as, as on the Parks Board was take care of what we have. I think there's an opportunity to look at some of the more socioeconomic struggling areas, but at the same time, I see that as a sort of a more short-term goal. At the same time, I, if the opportunity is presented to expand the boundary, you know, thinking more proactively in terms of, you know, 20 to 30 years, is, is Perkins the cutoff? Is Quinneyby? Is Brook Lake? I don't know that answer. But, you know, Brook, I, I think of in terms of interchanges and stuff, we've really only got one in Kaiser, and that's the Schmawa. It would be interesting to see how Brook Lake could be improved as part of this, sort of the regional piece of it, but it's unencumbered. of the regional piece of it, but it's unincorporated right now, so I don't know. Long-term, you know, who knows?
Well, grab a cookie and go home.
One more. Thanks for taking the time to talk with us, we appreciate this, it's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
End of planning commission for tonight. And for this year, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody.